Sorry, people were like that. You know, but there's two ways to go. One would be to go to the block here who's our office administrator. She can run down and get some more. Kevin Judy Catlon, she was our new member for a month. So she can have a, she has a source for all that kind of stuff. It's important because we've certainly had a lot of medical people in our congregation. This is what I mean.
Test, 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 one, two, one, two, one, two. One, two, one, two. Oh, good. This is on, right? You can all hear me? Good. All right, so it's seven o'clock, so welcome. It's great to see you. It's a joy to have you with us here tonight. A couple of items of housekeeping up, and they're out there in the back. I printed a folder with stuff on the inside for everybody. So everybody got one? Okay, good. And there's also going around a clipboard. Who's got the clipboard? Could you raise your hand for us here? Over there? Okay. Wonderful. A clipboard, and what we're asking is if you could please just check your name on the side. And the reason we're doing it is this. Now, I know, you know, if you're anything like me, you probably don't like people to know what you're doing, right? So, and I get that. But here's why we're asking you to do it. And it's simply because, as you know, one of our, our picture of a disciple has got four parts: worship weekly, walk daily, connect consistently, and serve monthly. And in council, we were talking about how if this is really what we want our church to look like, well, you have to measure it because you, you get what you measure, right? And if you don't measure something, then you never get it. And so along those lines, one thing we want to do is see how we're doing connecting people to the church outside of Sunday morning. That is, do people just show up to church on Sunday morning? Or are people also showing up to church on Sunday morning and then connected in some other way during the month? And you know, the only way we know that data for sure is if you bother to, to check your name off on the side, okay? So we're not trying to keep tabs on you. It's really not about you and keeping tabs on you. It really has to do with us as a church. It helps us know as a church how we're doing and whether we're helping people to connect or whether we need to work harder on that. Make sense? All right, so there's that. So let me begin this morning, and, no, this morning, good craving. I begin this evening in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Almighty Lord, gracious God, and Father, we thank you and we praise you for this day which you have given to us. God Almighty, thank you. Lord, thank you for this day that you've given. Thank you for the successes we've had. Thank you for the joys we've had. Thank you, Lord, for the obstacles and things that we've had to overcome. God, I thank you for this time to come together, and I thank you for this Wednesday evening. Lord, it's such a joy to see people at church again on a Wednesday night. Come, Holy Spirit. Come, Holy Spirit, and be with us now. Let us hear you speaking to us through your word. Open up our minds so we can hear your word and understand it. We ask this, Jesus, in your name. Amen? Amen. All right. So, oh. You ever have that dream where you stand up in front of 100 people and you don't know what to say? Yeah. That just flashed before my eyes right there. Uh-oh. Uh-oh. Anybody know any good... What's that? Ah, there we go. I got it. Okay. So, and I'm very, very excited to be here tonight, and I'll tell you why. Because it has, you know, I've been here now for four years. And in those four years, I've had the opportunity to teach many times. So, for example, we've taught the Alpha Course, and my wife and I taught a book called Faith at Home. And of course, I've taught a lot of confirmation and cross-generations, new members classes. You know, I've had the opportunity to teach many, many times, but believe it or not, this is the first time I've had, first opportunity I've had, to do a Bible study since 2015. Isn't that amazing? So five years it's been since I've had the opportunity to actually just open up the Bible and teach it. And, boy, that is something I have really, really missed because I love preaching and I love teaching, and I get to preach all the time, but it's been five years since I've had the opportunity to teach. So I've been looking forward to this for a very long time. And you know, you might remember, we took the Reveal Survey back in February 2019. Do y'all remember that? Right? Seems like an eternity ago, doesn't it? February of 2019. But we took the Reveal Survey back in February of 2019. It was a snapshot of our congregation at that moment of time, and the congregation, and it revealed that we're a spiritually healthy congregation, solidly, we're fundamentally a healthy church. But one of the things that we could work on is, is help me understand the Bible in depth. That was one of the, the questions that rise to the top, is help me understand the Bible in depth. And so this is one of the responses to that, is how we help people understand the Bible better so that they can walk with Jesus more. And you know, February 2019 is only, what, a year and a half ago? But man, it seems like a lifetime, doesn't it? Just all that's happened in the last few months, all that's happened in the last few weeks practically. And so I thought that this would be a timely topic called Living in the End Times. So, inside your folder there, you should see a sheet that looks like this. It says, "Living in the End Times." All right, so let's take a look at that. Want to go over the course a little bit. So as I say, you know, we are living in some crazy and confusing times, times that make you wonder, could this be the end? Or maybe that's just me. I don't know. But times that make you wonder, could this be the end? And so over these eight weeks, we will look at various books of the New Testament and see what those books have to actually say about the end time. So I got a question for you, just to kind of get things started. You know, you don't have to be at church on a sun, on a Wednesday at seven o'clock at night wearing a mask, so why are you here? What are you hoping to get out of this? Would anyone be willing to, to share? Not all at once, please. Yeah, I just want to come to church again, and amen to that, yeah. Just to get out and get, take a step back toward normal life again, right? Good. A better understanding of the, of what the Bible says about the end times? Good. Good. Thank you. Yeah, don't forsake the assembly, it says in the Bible, right? That if we do, then our faith tends to go out. It tends to grow cold. Right? Good. Anybody else? Well, I'm like, you know, I thought it'd be really interesting if you're going to teach your first Bible study in five years, you might as well dive into the deep end there, right? And go for the end times, especially at a time like this. And I've designed this course to be a broad, to be an overview, an overview of a broad swath of the New Testament, rather than an in-depth study of one slice of the Bible. How many of you have ever done Bible study fellowship or anything like that? Okay? Great. So you all know what I'm talking about with in-depth study of the Bible, right? You go really deep, really, really, really deep. It's fantastic. This is not that, right? Simply because we don't have the time, and also the topic itself, the end times, as you'll soon discover as we go through this, it's such a massive topic that to go into that level of depth, you really would need almost a full college-level course, a college semester. And I don't think any of us want to put that much time into it right now. So we're, it's going to be an overview of the whole thing. It's an overview. And that brings us to the second paragraph here. So this is a survey course, designed to be more broad than deep. I want us to find out what Jesus and the apostles tell us about the end times? So please, and that's the important thing, right? I want us to find out what Jesus and the apostles tell us about the end times. Because I'd imagine if we were to go around the room and say, hey, what do you think about the end times? We probably would all come to a cluster of four, five, or six things, but ask yourself, how do you know those? And in most cases, it's probably because we've heard someone preach on the radio, or we've seen someone teach on cable TV, or maybe some literature we've picked up at a truck stop or something like that. You know, there's all kinds of different things out there. But rather than, than studying what other people say about the Second Coming of Christ, let's look at what the Bible says. All right, so that's, that's what we're going to do. Let's look, look at what the Bible says, what Jesus and the apostles tell us about the end times. And so with that in mind, please bring your Bible. Now, we do have pew Bibles here in the church, right? You just got to reach in the pew ahead of you. We do have pew Bibles here in the church, but please do bring your own Bible. There's no book, there's no workbook, so there's no cost or anything like that. But each class, I will hand out the next week's lessons. And so if you want to look in your, in the other side of the pocket, you should see these two here. And you can see, one is marked Lesson One, September 16th, and the other is marked Lesson, Lesson Two, and that is, whoops, and the other is marked Lesson Two, September 23rd, right? So what I, sir? Yeah, and you know, that's a great question. So why are the Bibles and the pews up here? And the reason we did that is we have to have every other, every other row seating, and we thought that by putting the Bibles here, people wouldn't want to sit on them. And that's really what it comes down to. That, and also when we, when we first started this, if you remember back in March, there was a lot of worry, not only about the transmission through droplets, but especially through touch. And so at the time, the, the philosophy was if you pull the hymnals, then people won't be touching. So that's why they're there. Good question. But if you want to take a look in your, your packet there, so we have Lesson One, which is what we're going to go through this week, and then Lesson Two, which is your homework, such as it is, for next week. You can see it's very short. It's just literally, you know, one chapter from the Bible, Matthew, Chapter 25. And so what I ask is that when you go home, week after week, take that, take that homework with you, take that lesson with you, and go over it. And by going over it, I mean simply read through it. Read through it two, three, maybe four times, just to familiarize yourself with what that lesson is about, so that you can hear what God is saying to you, you can think about what that author of the Bible is saying, and then you'll be ready to talk, okay? So that's all I ask, is that you, you come, having read through it two or three times, prepared. And then finally, I want to make this a participatory class. You know, there's a couple different ways of doing classes. One would be a lecture format, and in spite of my podium here, one would be a lecture format, and I, I don't want to just do that. I do want to make this participatory. So I'm planning to prepare, we, we have an hour-long class. I'm planning to prepare about 30 minutes of material, and that should leave about 30 minutes for all y'all, to ask questions, to discuss, and I'm hoping that's where the real fun will be, is that as we, we talk back and forth about what we've heard in the Bible and what we think, and then we ask questions, that's where the fun gets to, okay? So in other words, I'm relying on you to help me teach this thing. Amen? All right, so. So that's kind of an introduction, overview to the course. One last note, if you want to take a look at that syllabus there. You can see that we're, we're starting here with Mark, then we go through Matthew, John, Paul, so we're skipping Luke, simply because compared to Matthew, Matthew, Mark, and John, Luke doesn't have an awful lot to say about the, about the end times. So Mark, Matthew, John, Paul, the later New Testament, that is, you know, Peter, James, Jude, Book of Hebrews, that kind of thing. And here's the important thing, we're taking two weeks off in October. One, because I will be up in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania for a, a meeting of the seminary. And then the other is on October 28th, the weekend, the week of Halloween, we're planning to have a Clue Night. And so in addition to this class, we also have our Youth and Children Instruction going on simultaneously. We're going to put together a Clue Night. Y'all play Clue, right? You know, Sergeant Mustard in the library with a, and we're going to actually act that out here. So who's the murderer? Well, Pastor Eric in the sanctuary with a pulpit, or, you know, something, something like that. And so we, we, we want you to be a part of that, and I don't want to get this class to get in the way. And getting back to it, we saved the good stuff for last, and so I'm sure you're all eager to talk about the rapture, eager to talk about the millennium, and eager to talk about the Book of Revelation and the various judgments described therein. And we are going to talk about that, but we're saving them for last. We're saving those for the last three weeks, and we will spend a lot of time on that. I mean, the millennium is only about 10, 12 verses in the Bible, but we're going to take a whole session on it. The rapture is only about 20 verses in the Bible, if it's in the Bible, and we're going to take it a whole hour on that. The Book of Revelation will take a whole hour on that, so we're going to, we're going to get there. But by design, I want you to go through the rest of the New Testament first, so that you're kind of ready for it, all right? And again, the idea here is not just that you're pulling stuff that you may have heard out in the culture, but you're actually pulling it from the Bible itself. So we'll get there. Any questions on that? Pretty straightforward. So without further ado, let's dive into Mark. So why Mark? Why the Gospel of Mark of all places? I mean, if you're going to start a study like this in the end times, why choose Mark? Well, for some good reasons. First of all, most importantly of all, Mark is the earliest of the Gospels. So there's four Gospels, Matthew, Mark, Luke, John. And Mark is the earliest of the Gospels, written sometime between the mid-'50s and the mid-'60s. And Matthew and Luke, who wrote about 10 years afterwards, 10, 15 years afterwards, Matthew and Luke used Mark as one of their sources, which is why, as you read Matthew, Mark, and Luke together, there's a lot of similarities between them, but then some differences, some difference in emphases. And that's because Matthew and Luke drew on Mark. So it begins with Mark, and then it moves on to Matthew and Luke. Mark is also the shortest of the Gospels, at only 16 chapters, but amazingly, one, one entire chapter of Mark is dedicated to the end times. It's the chapter we're looking at today. One entire Gospel, a chapter is dedicated to the end times, Mark, Chapter 13. And this is what scholars call the Markan Apocalypse. Isn't that a great name? The Markan Apocalypse. Markan meaning referring to Mark, and apocalypse meaning a description of the end of the world, the Markan Apocalypse. In this chapter that you hold in your hand, this is absolutely foundational for any discussion about the end times in the New Testament. Because this, Mark 13, is the clearest and longest teaching that we have from Jesus Christ himself. So later on, we'll look at what Paul says, we'll look at what Peter says, we'll look at what James says. But this is the longest and clearest teaching that we have from Jesus Christ himself, and this is from the earliest of the Gospels. So this is the foundation stone upon which everything else is built. And hopefully that'll be clear by the time we get through tonight. So it's the foundation stone upon which everything is built. So that's why we're starting here with Mark. Now let me give you a little run-in into the lesson itself. So Mark 13, you know, we're just kind of opening up the Bible. Mark 13 is, this, this portion of the, the Gospel of Mark is set in the year 30, or more likely, the year 33. That's the year that Jesus was crucified and then rose from the dead. This takes place on the Tuesday of Holy Week. So a Tuesday in March or April of the year 30 or 33. It's the Tuesday of Holy Week. If you remember, what happens on the Sunday of Holy Week? The first one? What do we call the first Sunday of Holy Week? Palm Sunday, right? What happens on Palm Sunday? Exactly. Jesus comes riding into Jerusalem in triumph, unseated on a donkey. The people are waving their palms, shouting, "Hosanna, Hosanna, Hosanna." So that's Sunday of Holy Week. What happens on Monday of Holy Week? Yeah, Jesus goes into the temple. He overturns the tables of the moneylenders and he drives them out, right? So that's quite an entrance into the temple. Tuesday of Holy Week, Jesus goes back to the temple, and he spends the whole day disputing with the scribes, the Pharisees, and the Sadducees. And so these are the, the disputes back and forth about the resurrection, about Caesar's coin, about who is the Messiah. Time after time after time, Jesus adversaries come forward to him and try to, excuse me, and try to trip him up with his words. And time after time after time, Jesus gets the better of them. So that's kind of the setting, right? That's what's gone on place, is that Jesus has spent the last two days, first of all, physically upsetting the temple, and then socially upsetting the temple, just going in there and really, you know, hammering at these religious authorities. So that's what's happened on Tuesday of Holy Week, and we, we pick up the lesson toward the evening, so probably right about this time, toward the evening when Jesus walks out of the temple, and that's where we pick it up today, all right? So let's take a look. Mark, this is, did you get a copy in the back there? That little postal service tray back there in the center, okay? So let's take a look. So this is Mark, Chapter 13, and we will pick it up here with verses 1 through 4. Would anyone like to stand up and read that for us, nice and loud? And no one's looking at the pastor. I love it. Jennifer, can I, if you can stand up nice and loud for us, all right? You can take your thing off if you want. Great, thank you, Jennifer. Verses 1 through 4, right? Thank you very much. Let's give her a round of applause. She was the first one for that. And there will be others, just so you know, okay? Remember, I want this to be participatory. Okay, so here's your first question. In verse, verse 4, Peter, James, and John, they come up to Jesus privately and they say, hey, tell us. Because these are Peter, James, and John, they think they're better than the other apostles. Jesus, tell us, right? Tell us, when will all these things be? And what will be the sign that all these things are about to happen? Here's the first question. What are all these things? Signs? Signs about specifically what? What, what are they asking about? The temple, right? So they're asking specifically about the temple. Remember, they've just spent the last two days in the temple. Jesus has gotten in all this adversarial conflict in the temple. They come out, Jesus says, "Not one stone here will left, be left standing upon another." And they say, well, when will these things happen? So they ask a question about the temple. But notice, Jesus' answer is not just about the temple, it's about the end of the world. So it's a, it's a specific, limited question, and Jesus' answer expands it all the way to the end of the world. So who would like to read that for us? That's verses 5 through 8. Sir, please, if you can stand up and nice and loud for us. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. That's verses 5 through 8, okay? So they ask a question about the temple. Jesus responds by talking not about the temple, but by talking about the end of the world. And what is the very, very first thing that Jesus says? What's that? Yeah, isn't that amazing? So the first thing that Jesus says is, "Do not be deceived," your translation might say, "See that no one leads you astray," right? The very first thing. And don't you think that's kind of a signal to us? As we start this course about the end times, that the very first thing, the, literally the first words out of his mouth are, "Do not be led astray," right? And so that's a warning to us, because as you know, you know, from popular culture, as you know, this, any topic of the end times is notoriously prone to misinterpretation, to premature rushes to judgment. Time and time and time and time again, people pronounce that the end is nigh, only it wasn't, and that happens all the time, right? So we have to be careful. Do not be led astray. It's literally the first thing he says, right? Don't jump to conclusions, but on the other hand, don't jump to conclusions, but on the other hand, do keep an eye out. Four times, he says, "Be on your guard." Take a look at this. Verse 9, "But be on your guard." Turn the page over, verse 23, "But be on your guard." Turn the page over again, verse 33, "But be on your guard and keep awake." And then finally, verse 37, "What I say to you, I say to all, keep awake." And so Jesus' very first words are, "Do not be led astray." And then four times, he says, "Be on your guard, be on your guard, keep awake, don't fall asleep." And that tells us that there's these boundaries. On the one hand, we don't want to rush to judgment; on the other hand, we don't want to be obtuse and thick about this. You've got to keep your eyes open, right? And so those are kind of the boundaries that we have to run in as disciples when it comes to the end time. Make sense? So Jesus lists, the, the first thing that Jesus does after saying, "See that nobody leads you astray," he says, you'll, you'll hear these, these different signs. What are some of the, the signs, as he calls them? Rumors of war, that's one. What's another one? Famines, that's another one. What's another one? Earthquakes in various places, right? Kind of scary stuff, right? And what does he call them in verse 7? Yet of the birth pains, right? So these are the beginnings of the birth pains, wars, earthquakes, famines in various places. Now, we will come back to these in the Book of Revelation. Remember how I said that this, this lesson is the foundation for the rest, what's, what's in the rest of the New Testament? We'll come back to these. The Book of Revelation has a heyday with wars, earthquakes, famines in various places. We'll come back to them. But for now, the important thing is to recognize that, as he calls it, these are the beginning of the birth pains. So these things happen, and these are the beginning of the birth pains, that just as a woman going into labor, it signifies the imminent approach of something different, of new life, which in this case is tribulation. And that word, if you want to turn the page over to verse 19, that word is found in verse 19, "For in those days there will be such tribulation." And then it's found again in verse 24, "But in those days after that tribulation." So there are these signs, right? Jesus says, "Be, on the one hand, be, be, do not be led astray; on the other hand, be on your guard," because there are signs, earthquakes, wars, famines. These are the birth pains. That's in verse 7, and then in verse 24, he says, "And then after that tribulation," which tells us that between the one and the other comes the tribulation, all right? And the word comes right out of the Bible. Sir? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. The mask. Yeah, so great question. Yeah, I'll always repeat the question, not only for our sake, but we're also recording this online, so that's good. Yeah, and so the question was, would that be things like, for example, climate change and things? Yeah, and we're, we're going to get to those. Jesus gets to cosmic signs at the end. But yeah, tribulation is kind of the overarching title for all these horrible things that happen. And we'll look in detail at what tribulation is, but it would include global catastrophes and things like that. So let's take a look. And that, that's a perfect lead into the next section, okay? Well, if, if this introduces tribulation, well, what is tribulation? So let's take a look. Verse 9 through 13. Who would like to read that? Sir, if you can stand up for us, please? Thank you. Thank you.
But be on your guard, lest you be lifted over its sounds, and you will be beaten in synagogues, and you will stand before governors and kings, for my sake, should they have witnessed before you. And the gospel is first being preached to all nations. And when they bring you to trial and deliver you over, do not be anxious beforehand, what you are to say, but say whatever is given you in the cloud, for it is not you who speak, but the Holy Spirit. And brother will deliver brother over to death, and father is child, and children will rise against parents and have them put to death. And you will be hated by all for my name's sake, but the one who endures to the end will be saved.
Wonderful, thank you. So verses nine through thirteen, okay? So it's the start of the section called tribulation, right? So how would you describe this tribulation?
Sounds like the Nazis in World War II.
It sounds like, sorry?
The Nazis in World War II.
Sounds like the Nazis in World War II. Yeah, what, what makes you say that? I agree, but I'm just curious.
Well, because they start, if you look at, uh, oh, here, brother against brother, daughter against daughter, you know, we're going to bring your children out to be able to tell on your parents.
Yeah.
And tell us if they do something against the Third Reich. Uh, some of that is actually, is being taught right now in our schools.
Yeah, and so...
And we need to watch that very carefully.
Let me repeat it for the sake of people. Uh, and so he brings up the point that, uh, this would be, an example of this would be Nazi Germany, or I'd say Communist Russia, or Communist China, Communist Cuba, for that matter, uh, really any of the communist countries, uh, where this is the, this is what they pursue. They teach children to report their parents and brothers to report their brothers. That's kind of a picture, good. So how would we describe this? Is that, that's an example of something where it's really happened in history. How would we describe this? Is there a word you might use to describe this? This, for, so, because if, for example, this is not climate, uh, climate catastrophe, right? Or stars falling from the sky. But how would you describe the, what's going on here in verses nine through thirteen? Sorry?
Family breakdown.
Family breakdown would be a great one, excellent, because it's, it's horrible, right? I mean, can you imagine husband and wife and all against each other at each other's throats? It'd be terrible. Family breakdown, what would be, might be another one?
Indoctrination.
Indoctrination, yeah, and that's presumably behind it, right? That they're teaching, okay? Persecution, that's the word I was looking for, right? Is that persecution? And so the, the tribulation includes persecution. Uh, it's persecution by both Jews and Gentiles. Notice in verse nine, they would deliver you to councils or synagogues. You will stand before governors and kings, so both Jews and Gentiles will, will be the, the persecutors. Um, where am I going to say this? Condemned by governments, kicked out of families, and you mentioned that, right, team? You will be hated by all for my name's sake. So that kind of begs the question, well, what causes this persecution? For what are the people being persecuted? Well, socialism might be one of the things that persecutes, but what causes the persecution? Yeah, your belief in God. It says it in two places. One is in verse thirteen, "You will be hated by all for my name's sake." And the other, can anybody see the other one in, in that section? In verses ten and eleven, Jesus says, "Here's your opportunity to do what?"
Proclaim.
Proclaim the gospel. So when you're brought before the legal authorities, when you're brought before the court of public opinion, here's your opportunity to bear witness, to speak the truth. So that's the first level of the trib, the first thing that happens, well, either the first level or the first thing that happens in tribulation, the first thing Jesus describes at least, is persecution. Uh, persecution which then prompts a bearing witness, uh, which is, believe me, I do not want to get persecuted, right? I love living in America. I love living in Texas, which is like America up about five notches, right? It's a great place. But one of the benefits of persecution is people get really serious about their faith. True story, and so in, uh, here's a trick question for you. What, what is the largest Lutheran church in the world?
Ethiopia.
Yes, Ethiopia, absolutely ding ding ding, way in the back. Largest Lutheran church in the world is in Ethiopia. Isn't that amazing? There are more Lutherans in Ethiopia than in all of North America. Incredible. And the reason there are more Lutherans in Ethiopia, do you all remember back the Ethiopian famine in the nineteen eighties? Remember that? Do you know what caused that famine? It wasn't just the weather. Do you remember who was ruling Ethiopia in the nineteen eighties? It was the communists. And so the food could be shipped to the people, but the communists wouldn't let it get in. It was a government-caused famine. Anyways, that was part of the persecution of the people. Uh, and, you know, the communists have gone, but they were, of course, they went after the Lutheran church, which at that point was pretty small. Um, the, the Norwegians and the Germans had come, and they had, they had missionaries in Ethiopia for decades and decades with only limited success. But in that time of persecution, when pesters were being hauled off, taken off to jail and shot, uh, that's when the believers really began to bear witness to Jesus Christ. And the communists fell, and now it's the largest Lutheran church in the world. All of which is to say, is I don't want persecution upon us, but if it should come, it is, there's a blessing. It's another story. So let, let's keep on, continue. Verses fourteen through twenty. Who wants to read that section, nice and loud, fourteen through twenty? Bradley Morrison, did you say you were going to do that?
Uh, going to what verse?
Fourteen through twenty.
Uh, but when you see the abomination and desolation standing in your pot not speed, let the reader understand, then let those who are in Judea flee to the mountains. Let the one who is on the house not move down, nor enter his house to take anything out. And let the one who is in the field not turn back to take his clothes. And alas, for women who are pregnant, and for those who are nursing infants in those days, pray that it may not happen in winter. For in those days there will be such tribulation as has not been from the beginning of creation that God created until now and never will be. And if the Lord has not cut short today, no human being would be saved, but for the sake of the elect, whom he chose, he shortens the days.
Excellent, thank you, Bradley. I appreciate that. He got voluntold, in case you're wondering, so, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay, so if in the first section, in the previous section, tribulation was persecution, right? Persecution at the hand of governments, persecution at the hand of religious authorities, persecution at the hand of your own family members. If in the first section, tribulation was persecution, how would you describe it in this section? Because this one's not really about governments persecuting people, right? What is this section about? What's kind of the dominant theme?
When it starts, don't look back, go.
Yeah. When it starts, don't look back, go, like Lot's wife, right? What happened to Sodom and Gomorrah? And it's the same kind of idea here. I'd say the dominant theme would be, uh, don't look back. What, what might be another way of talking about that? Would someone mind getting the door back there? Thanks. Thank you. I'd say the, the dominant theme, in my opinion, would be flight, that there's this terrible, terrible chaos that's happening, really the worst chaos imaginable, verse nineteen, "For in those days there will be such tribulation as has not been from the beginning of creation that God created until now, no and never shall be. And if the Lord had not cut short those days, no human being would be saved." So this, the second layer, or the second part that Jesus talks about, about persecution, about tribulation, has to do with things literally falling apart. Such unbelievable horror, such chaos, such confusion, that Jesus says, "Just, you know, run for the hills. Just turn your back and run, leave everything behind." That's a great question. Well, that, hold on to that, because we're going to get to that, especially as we go through, uh, as we go through it. And as you can imagine, Book of Revelation spends a lot of time talking about this, doesn't it, right? Who here has read the Book of Revelation? Just curious. Okay, good. Uh, so as you know, the Book of Revelation spends chapter after chapter after chapter talking about this kind of thing, right? One, one unimaginable horror listed upon another, and just when you think it's over, hey, here's a whole nother round comes forward, right? So the Book of Revelation spends a lot of time talking about this. And let's take a look in verse fourteen, it's called the abomination of desolation. They don't name them like they used to, do they? That's a good one, the abomination of desolation, the abomination of desolation. Uh, this is a phrase, and it comes from the prophet Daniel, uh, Daniel nine twenty-seven, which says, "And on the wing of abomination shall come one who makes desolate, until decreed end is poured out in the desolator." It's part of a much larger prophecy, but that, the phrase, "abomination of desolation," comes from Daniel, which is a reminder to us that, again, by design, this is a survey course. It's meant to be broad, not deep, uh, and that we are setting aside half of the Bible, right? There's a lot that the Old Testament has to say about the end of the world, and we just don't have time to go into it, okay? So we're not even dealing with the Old Testament at all. And this idea of the abomination of desolation is something that we'll come back to, again, when we look at the Book of Revelation, and then especially when we look at the, the rapture. We'll come back, and we'll, we'll look at this, because it functions, it, it features prominently in both of those things. So an abomination is not just something that's really bad. I mean, it is that, of course. But in the, uh, in the Bible, an abomination is something that is really bad because it is wicked or unclean. Uh, and so something that is an abomination is not just terrible, but it's terrible because it makes things unholy or unclean. That's an abomination. A desolation, or to desolate something means to utterly destroy it, to utterly lay it waste. So the abomination that causes desolation would be a prophecy of something terribly unclean that lays waste. And remember, what, what were they talking about specifically way back in verses one through five? But now we're talking about the end of the world, right? But what, what did Peter, James, and John start off talking about? Temple, right? So it's, it's interesting, right? Jesus, you know, they're, they're asking about the temple. All of a sudden, Jesus goes way over here, talking about all kinds of things. And then he circles back really quickly to talk about this abomination of desolation. Uh, and that actually came to pass in the year seventy, when the Romans destroyed the Jewish temple, wiped it clean off the temple mount, and they cast down every stone. Remember how this began in verse, uh, two? "Do you see these great buildings? There will not be left here one stone upon another that shall not be thrown down." And that is, has come to pass. And it is that way to this day, right? So the abomination of desolation is something that's already happened. It could also be something that will happen in the future, but it's at least already been partially fulfilled. Has anybody here been to Jerusalem, by the way? Can you find these, oh, thank you. Uh, it's an incredible sight, isn't it? When you actually, you, you look out and you see the temple mount, which is this platform on which the temple is built. Uh, but what you see on the temple mount now is not the temple. Do you remember what it is? Yeah, the Dome of the Rock. Is that a Jewish dome? Right. It's a Muslim mosque. There's two of them, the Dome of the Rock and then the Al-Aqsa Mosque. Um, and so as long as those are there, Jews can't worship. So this remains in effect. Sir?
I was listening to a program a week or two ago, and the minister was preaching, talking about, he was talking about the temple and every stone being turned over. And what he said was that the temple, when they destroyed the temple, they plunged and took all the gold, but the walls had gold, and there was secret chambers that had, and so the looters went in and tore the left of the temple completely down for the pieces of gold that was left.
Yeah, and that, that is absolutely true.
Every stone.
Every stone, yeah. And let me repeat it for the sake of people watching online. And so Dave's comment was that he had heard another teacher talking about, um, you know, that every stone will be thrown down, every stone is turned over. And the reason they were is because in the ancient world, they didn't have banks, right? Today, you could go down to Frost Bank or something, put your money in the safe. They didn't have that. And so people kept their valuables in the temple. The Romans knew it, which is why the Romans wanted it. And when they finally got the temple, they went looking for gold, and when they went looking for gold, they went looking for gold. And so that's why they literally tore, like, literally tore the place apart looking for gold, uh, and threw all the rubble away. So, yeah.
Because I couldn't imagine such a massive temple like that having every stone turned over.
Every stone, because they hadn't, they, they, they had a vested interest in finding it, right? So then that's why. So again, we'll come back to this later on, especially in the Book of Revelation. Let's take a look in verses twenty-one through twenty-three. So who wants a nice short reading? Sir? Thank you, Darren.
And then if anyone says to you, "Look, here is the price," or "Look, here he is," do not believe it. For the false price and false prophets will arise and perform signs and wonders and lead astray, if possible, the elect. But be on guard, I have told you all things beforehand.
Great, thank you, Darren, appreciate it. So we've had, uh, this is beginning with verses twenty-one all the way to twenty-three. This is now a different kind of tribulation. Uh, what kind of tribulation is this? False, what? False? False Christs, false prophets, false teachers, false teaching, right? Which is a different type. So so far, we've had, let's see, so far, we've had persecution, uh, and then we've had flight and chaos, and now we've had false teaching, and it all falls within this overarching head of tribulation. Uh, and we'll see this, this is really important later on, especially in the later New Testament. But again, in the Book of Revelation, it's, you know, false prophets show up there, but especially in the later New Testament, they really focus on this section. And so Jesus warns you, now be on guard. And now finally, verses twenty-four through twenty-seven, who'd like that for us? Mike, thank you.
But in those days after the tribulation, the sun will be dark, and the moon will be its light, and the stars will be falling from heaven, and the power in the heavens will be shaken. And then they will see the Son of Man coming in clouds with great power of glory. And then he will send out the angels gathering the left and the foreland of the ends of the earth to the ones who gather.
Great, thank you, thank you. So what happens in these three verses? What kind of tribulation is this? Especially in verse, uh, twenty-four and twenty-five? Sorry? Yeah, and this is kind of what you began with, right? Talking about climate change and things like that, yeah. And so we've moved from, uh, we've moved from social, this is the sun, the moon, the stars, right? The sun will be dark and the moon turn to blood, the stars will be falling from the heavens. These are signs up in the heavens, signs in the skies. Uh, so tribulation up in the heavenly places. Uh, there's tribulation on earth, that was the previous section, not tribulation in heaven. And then finally, what happens? Then finally, we get to the second coming of Christ. Isn't that amazing? Now, it, it seems like kind of an obvious point, but note at what point Jesus Christ comes again. He comes after all this stuff, okay? And we'll, this is important, when we take a look at the millennium, when we take a look at the rapture, it's important to keep that in mind. You go through all of this stuff, then Jesus comes. Uh, so we'll, we'll come back to that. That's an important point, pretty obvious, but pretty important too. So then Jesus Christ comes again. He comes to judge, and he comes to gather his elect into the kingdom. So by this point, are you kind of seeing just how multi-layered the Bible's teaching about the end times is? Uh, that so far, we've had, um, tribulation as wars, earthquakes, and famines, as persecution, as chaos and suffering, as false teachers, as signs in the sun and the moon and stars, that all kind of falls under the same category. So there's all of these different layers, different emphases, and as we'll see, remember, this is the foundation stone upon which the rest of the New Testament is built. Uh, as we'll see, not just, as we'll see, different books of the Bible, different authors of the Bible will emphasize, will draw out some of those emphases and really develop them in their writing. Uh, whereas, you know, a different author will take something else and develop that in his writing. So as we look through the New Testament, we'll see that there's different emphases, different weighting, but they all basically come back to here. Sir?
The thing that I noticed in verse twenty, following that, he uses the term "the elect." It's a great thing.
Yeah, oh, that's interesting.
If you look at it, uh...
Yeah.
He seems to be indicating, uh, you need to stray, possible, the elect.
Mm-hmm.
And he talks about, um, gathering the left, um, foreland of the...
Right, right.
And...
Oh, thanks. Yeah. Well said. Yeah, you're, you're looking ahead a couple of books here, I love it. And so let me repeat it for people. Uh, so Mr. Capes brings out the, uh, brings out the, uh, the observation that the phrase, the elect, first appears in verse twenty, which then repeated three times, verses twenty, twenty-two, and twenty-seven. The elect, the elect, his elect. Uh, and so he, uh, he, he brings the conclusion for that, draws the conclusion, that in spite of all these terrible things that are happening, what matters is that God's elect will be saved. Uh, and that becomes a dominant, dominant theme, especially in the Book of Revelation. In a nutshell, that's what the Book of Revelation is all about. That things will go from bad to worse, but God will save his people. Oh, the predestination question, yeah. We'll have plenty of time to talk about that, that's a hard one, but yeah. But well, I'm, I'm not dodging it, I'm just dodging it for today, that's all. But we will get back to it, I promise you. You keep me accountable to that, okay? So let's take a look here, in, in verses twenty-eight through thirty-seven. Uh, let me read these for us, so that we have a couple of minutes at the end to talk. So verses twenty-eight through thirty-seven. So Jesus says, so he's wrapped up his teaching, right? He's gone through all these things that will happen, and it ends with the coming of the Son of Man to gather his elect into heaven. And that's the end of it all. At Jesus Christ comes, he judges, takes the elect into heaven with him. Verse twenty-eight, from the fig tree learn its lesson, as soon as its branch becomes tender and puts out its leaves, you know that the summer is near. So also, when you see these things taking place, you know that he is near at the very gates. Truly I say to you, this generation will not pass until all these things take place. And there are books and books and books written about what Jesus meant by the word, this generation. Heaven and earth will pass away, but my words will not pass away. But concerning that they are our, no one knows, not even the angels in heaven, nor the sun, but only the Father. Be on guard, keep awake. For you do not know when the time will come. It's like a man going on a journey, when he leaves home and puts his servants in charge, each with his work, and commands the doorkeeper to stay awake. Therefore, stay awake, because you do not know when the master of the house will come. In the evening, at midnight, when the rooster crows, in the morning, lest he come suddenly and find you asleep. And what I say to you, I say to all, stay awake. So after Jesus teaching about the end, he has these two little parables or illustrations. The first one is about a fig tree, and how would you summarize the fig tree? Like, what's kind of the point about the lesson of the fig tree? You're signs, right? You know, from the fig tree learn its lesson. Uh, in my part of the country, we'd say, you know, from the maple trees, learn the lesson. When they turn red and fall down from the sky, you know, hey, so winter's near, right? So in others, they're signs, and Jesus says, be on your watch, stay awake, these things are gonna happen. You're not, you can't miss them, right there, right there, you'll see it. So there's signs. What's the point of the second paragraph? Sorry? Yeah, isn't that interesting? So on the one hand, he says, uh, you know, keep your eye open for the signs, from the fig tree learn its lessons, because when these things take place, you know that he's near. And then right after that, he says, but about that day or hour, no one knows. Isn't that interesting? So again, we have these two things. Remember at the beginning, I said the very first thing he said was what? Right, be, be, don't be deceived, make sure nobody leads you astray. And then four times later, he says, be on your guard, keep out, keep looking, keep looking. And we have the same thing here, right? He says, from the fig tree learn its lesson, but no one knows when it's coming, right? Nobody knows when it's coming. So it's interesting, isn't it? And again, those are the, those are the boundaries that we're given to run in. That on the one hand, we know it's gonna come, and there are certain signs that it's gonna come, but on the other, we don't know when it's gonna come. So those are kind of the boundaries we have to work in. And, uh, a, a final point about this little parable, it's a mini parable, right? About, uh, this master on a house who goes on a journey and comes back. What's the point of that parable? What's the point of this little illustration, but the point to this little parable? Yeah, be ready, cause you don't know when he's coming, right? Now, as we'll see next week, Matthew, this is from the Gospel of Mark, when we get to Matthew, Matthew really takes this little section and runs with it. As you'll see in your homework, basically what Matthew does in, in Matthew chapter twenty-five, is he takes this idea and kind of builds it into different things. So we'll look a lot more at that this week. And again, I encourage you, between now and next week, just read through that lesson two, three times, familiarize yourself with it. But my big point for today was to go through this foundational chapter, right? This is the foundational chapter in the New Testament, the clearest and longest teaching we have from Jesus himself, about what the end will look like. And what I want you to see is that there's a lot in there. But even though it's only a single chapter of the Bible, there is a lot of different stuff going on in there. Wars, earthquakes, persecution, stars falling from the sky, chaos, I mean, all kinds of things going on in there. And every other book of the New Testament we read will draw from that and build on that, okay? So we've got like ten minutes left. Questions, comments? What's on your mind? Kent? Oh, that's great. So at, at, I've never really thought about that. Thanks Kent, you put me on the spot. Uh, so the, the question is about verse twenty. And it, uh, it says, and if the Lord had not cut short the days, no human being would, would be saved. But for the sake of the elect, he has cut them short. So Kent's question is, well, why did he cut them short and how, right? And when? Honestly, I think your answer is, is, I, I couldn't improve upon it. If I heard you correctly, it was kind of hard to hear through the mask. If I heard you correctly, I think what I heard you say was, but Jesus cut them short. Right, yeah. That's, and that'll preach right there, brother. Uh, that's an excellent point, cause I think you're right. That without Jesus, none of us would be saved. Uh, and that through the death and resurrection of Jesus, there's been this disruption in history, this interruption. And that gives us the opportunity to be saved. Sir? Yeah, uh-huh. Which is exactly, and so Dave Bowman brings the point that, uh, in, in a red, red letter Bible, this whole chapter is in red, cause that's what Jesus said, which is why I wanted to start with it, right? Cause let's see what Jesus says first, and then we'll build out the others. So, good point. Was there a question back there from you guys? No, are you sure? Okay. Sir? Excellent, so let me repeat it. Uh, excellent, excellent observation. And so, uh, Mr. Weiss's observation is that he, he's referring to, uh, there will be wars and earthquakes and famines in various places, right? And deception, right? And his, his, uh, his observation was that, well, we see these in every single generation, don't we? And generation after generation after generation, we see wars, earthquakes, famines, persecution, deception. And yet the end doesn't seem any closer now than it did two thousand years ago. Yeah. And you know what? Hold on to that, and then, then his, his observation was, and that's when the, uh, he looks at it as the end is when our life ends on this earth. And hold on to that, because we're gonna see that especially in the Gospel of John and in the later New Testament. So if you wanna take a look here, uh, on September thirtieth and October fourteenth, we really hit those points hard. So well done, you've anticipated that class, nice job. Mr. Morrison? Great. Yeah. Yeah, and then that, that's the million dollar question. So this is referring to verse thirty, and Dr. Miller has, his question is, you know, Jesus says, truly I say to you, and so whenever Jesus says that, that means listen up, cause it's really serious, right? Truly I say to you, this generation will not pass away until all these things take place. And the observation is, well, Jesus uttered these words about the year thirty-three, specifically about the temple. At least that's how we began. And then within forty years, and then a generation, the temple was destroyed. So there certainly was a fulfillment, at least a partial fulfillment, in that generation. But not all the stuff was fulfilled, cause we're still here, right? And so the question throughout history has always been, what generation is Jesus referring to? And there's all different schools of thought, but that's an excellent, excellent observation. Mr. Morrison? You guys have been like, I think the three of you have been colluding together or something here. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Morrison, it's a great question. The question had to do with verse, uh, fourteen about the Abomination of Desolation. And if, it, so his observation was, it might refer to the temple, in which case that has been laid desolate. But it could also refer to-